Good evening. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Town Council on April 1st to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Karina Noid.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Do we have recognition this evening?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Last council meeting, I recognized the Police Department, Fire Department, and Highway Department, and I neglected to say thank you to our Communications Department or the life. And they basically are the system that keeps everybody in check and in track. So our communications through all those scenarios did an excellent job in directing our fire and police, and I just would like to recognize them since I did forget. That'll be it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Minutes, please.
I move to approve the March 12th, 2024 special meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I have a correction.
Okay.
But it's, uh... Sorry, there was one place where I stated something about pipes, and it was typed as popes. But I wrote it down, and I left it on my desk. And then my name was misspelled in one other location. Page 13, my name was misspelled, and the pipes popes was somewhere around there. I'll find it and let you know.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion as corrected, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. The only thing I have is I'd like to thank the council for the flowers for when I was ill with COVID and in the hospital. They were much appreciated and done by a local florist. Subcommittee reports. Do we have any committees that met? Did Public Works meet?
No.
No one met? Okay. Town managers' report.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the Town Council, I'd just like to bring up some updates on paving. Public Works is gearing up for the new construction season. Middlebury Road and Hungerford will be completed this year, as well as many other streets consistent with the pavement management study. This will include skim coating, chip sealing, and full-depth milling and/or reconstruction. The revaluation process will... The assessor is here tonight. She will give a presentation during Item B under New Business for your consideration. The audit, all the documents have been submitted to King King. They are in the process of completing the work for the audit. We expect a response in the early part of April. And regarding FOI, we're overhauling our FOI handling policy. As you know, we just created an FOI policy in the last year. But as a result of implementing our CRM software, we need to align that policy with the software usage. The department heads are going to be asked with designating an FOI liaison for streamlined request processing. Basically, to facilitate this transition, we've scheduled a training session with the FOI Commission for April 26, 2024, to address staff inquiries and trade liaisons effectively. I believe that Watertown, as a result of us trying to fulfill a lot of FOI requests, that we've gone deeper into the retrieval of some documents, and I feel it's important for us to get clarification on what exactly is research when it comes to some of these FOIA requests that we're being asked to fulfill. So in an effort to get the proper training, I've asked the state of Connecticut to send a representative down for us to give training. This training will be open to the public, and it's scheduled for April 26 of this year. We do not have a time at this point, but I'm assuming it'll be sometime in the morning. ClearGov, the intent is to launch, consistent with the April 11 public hearing. We anticipate that it'll be forward-facing for any resident to look and see what's going on in the budget.
Good luck.
And that's all I have for you.
Okay. Appointments to boards and commissions?
We have a few. I move to reappoint Ronald Main, 5 The Green, Watertown, as a regular member of the Watertown Historic District Commission for a term to expire 2029.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I move to appoint Peter Moucheron, 63 Bowers Street, Watertown, as a member of the Watertown Housing Authority to fill the unexpired vacancy created by the resignation of Carmen Verone for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Indicating that we wanted bios on appointments, we do have one for Peter Verone. He's lived in town since 1986. He's married. He's retired from the post office and currently works at the Watertown Golf Club and has a lot of insight and experience to benefit the town. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Discussion regarding the proposed Town Manager and Board of Education budget. Anyone want to start?
Mark.
Madam Chairwoman, I thought it'd be appropriate for the assessor to give her presentation so that you had that information before you started the discussions.
Okay. For those who don't know me, I'm Faith Richmond. I'm the assessor for the Town of Watertown, and I put together a...
Excuse me, Faith. Hit the little button there.
Is that it?
Nope. It's going to go red.
My bad.
There it is.
There it is.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm Faith Richmond. I'm the assessor for the Town of Watertown, and I put together a little brief PowerPoint presentation, so hopefully it'll clarify a little bit more on the revaluation. Okay? So this is 2023. Our last revaluation was 2018, so five years ago. And by state statute, every five years, we do a revaluation. Okay. Nope, not working. No, good. A little bit about the revaluation company. They're based in Waterbury, Connecticut. They've been around for many years. It's equality valuation, and they are state certified. That's their certification from the state of Connecticut. And within, since 2018 and 2022, they successfully completed 31 revaluations. One of the benefits to using this company is they also integrate with our software for our real estate on the other end of it, and so it seamlessly integrates between them. Yeah, let's see. And we recently had our Board of Assessment appeals. We had 112 appeals that were filed by February 20. The appeals have all been completed, and the property owners are currently being notified via mail. We do have some board members: Jeff Franson, Mike Buckley, Debbie Lupo, Ron Ross, John Nigren, and Jeremy Johnson. This is a little brief overview about what percentages make up our grant list for 2023. So our motor vehicle consists of 10%. Our personal property, which is the businesses in town, 5.5%, and our real estate is 84.5%. And that includes residential and commercial. I just wanted to break down because a lot of times when people talk residential and commercial, I wanted to give a little more clarity of what we were talking about. So our residential properties, they include 1 to 4 family dwellings. Currently, the residential properties make up about 83.4% of the real estate assessments on the grant list, where the commercial accounts are 15.7%. And then we have vacant land and land use. Land use is like the PA 490, and that assessments are about 0.9%. Clarifying a little bit about commercial properties. You have automotive, apartment complexes, assisted living, entertainment, restaurants, industrial manufacturing, commercial offices, self-storage, retail, golf courses, and public I just wanted to do a little comparison on Watertown versus other towns that recently went through a revale. And Watertown was 40.1%. And then these are all the recent towns on the left-hand side, and their percentage of change in their real estate only.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Is that percent change in value?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Trying to touch on the motor vehicle taxes. Couple of years ago, the state mandated a 32.46 mil rate, and that was for anybody who was above that mil rate, any town that was above the mil rate. So we're trying to do a little bit of a comparison to give the average passenger car a general idea of what they would be paying. And when you look at that 12,800, that's not the actual value. That's 70% of the value. So the value's actually higher, but because we based taxes on the assessment only, we come down to the 12,800. So most residents will expect a decrease in their motor vehicle taxes. In '22, 12,800 at a 32.46, it was 415 a year. '23, the average assessment for a passenger car was right around 12,100, and we're estimating maybe a 28.99 mil rate. It would be 350 for the year. Trying to break down the single-family homes, because that's the bulk of the real estate. The average assessment in '22, the home value was 241,610, and the home assessment was 70% of that, 169,610. At the mil rate, that was the annual taxes. Now, in 2023, the cost tables, all that updated, all of the values were updated, and so this is where we're coming up with a home value of 346,571, with the home assessment, 70% of that, because that's what they pay the tax on, 242,600, estimating maybe a mil rate of 28,990. Annual taxes, 7032. If you break it down monthly, because most people put that in their monthly mortgage, it would be around 66,500.
I'm sorry, could you just go back to that slide, please? The bottom line, that's...
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's out of 12 months, so 79... I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading that.
798.
798?
Yep.
Out of 12?
Yep.
Okay. 66.5 per month? Thank you.
$800 if you're...
I'm all set. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Through the chairwoman. The... That average, how did you... Is that like a median number, or how did you arrive at that?
So what we tried to do is look at only the single family. So we extracted 2-family, 3-family, 4-family, and then we took out the outliers, the highs and the lows, and we tried to really concentrate on the average. I did review the median. It fell somewhere within there, but for this example, it seemed like the average was more appropriate.
It just seems, you know, the home value of 346.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like values have gone pretty high, maybe perhaps even higher than that. I was just curious to know how you arrived at that, but that's interesting to know.
Yep. This is just a review of the mil rates over time, and highlighting in red is the '21 and '22, that's when the state imposed the motor vehicle mil rate of 32.46. So it had a lower mil rate than the personal property and real estate. Okay. '22 to '23 grant list assessments. '22, we are using the tables from 2018, which was our last revaluation. So 2018 through '22, use the exact same cost tables. '23 is when we update with the revaluation, and the new cost tables come into effect, and now you could see like the difference in the change in the real estate. So 40.1%. Personal property, we had a growth of 7.03%. And then motor vehicle, we started seeing the COVID correction coming in a couple of years ago, and they all escalated all for the used car prices. Now they're all starting to decrease, and we see the change of 3.99. And net taxable property, 32.4% overall. The last slide, I was trying to give a pie chart to show you how we equalize the grant list, because the whole purpose of revaluation is to equalize our grant list, making sure that across all property classes, people are paying an equitable, fair and equitable amount. So if you look at the chart, and the dark green, 01499, it increased by 30.1%. And then you keep going down the chart, and you'll see what percentage and how it increased. 150 to 2999, 44.5. 300 to 4599 was 41.9. 451 to 5999, 41.8. 600,000 to 75999 is 49.6. And then 751 to almost 900, 43.7.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Just to...
Faith, is it...
Yeah.
Would you be able to forward your presentation to the council?
Yeah, if you like, sure.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Just to go over the procedure so that you understand what is going to occur. We are going to come up with budget numbers this evening, which we will send to the public hearing. That is on April 11. We will then listen to the public that attends, and after that, we will come up with the final numbers, and we will go to referendum for a vote. So there's plenty of time, either at public hearing or after that, to communicate with the council relative to the figures. As you can see, they're high. Does anyone care to have any... Make any comment before we go forward with the numbers? Okay. Saying none?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we have time to perhaps ask questions of some of the department heads, or should we do that now?
We can certainly do that now if you'd like. Yes, I believe they're here. Who would you like to talk to?
Okay. I have some questions for Water and Sewer.
Okay.
This'll be quick. So I just was trying to go through all of the information that you put together in the presentation last night, which I told you was excellent and really informative. But I know that there was one number where the percent increase was going to be, I think, 14%. But I know there were some other numbers that it was different. So I just want to know succinctly, what do you think this means for the rate pairs in Watertown if we go forward with everything that you suggested we do?
Can I ask you to clarify your question?
I mean, I know we need the... We still need the rate study. There's the lawsuit. So I know how complicated this is, but I guess my question is, will the amount that Water and Sewer users... Will that amount have to go up? And do you have any idea about how much it might go up?
I don't have a specific number on that, but it's, as I pointed out, it's a question of as we correct the INI issue to bring that money back down, it should level out what we're doing on the previous rate increase and then what is proposed possibly for July, when we get the rate study, hopefully before we pass the budget.
Okay. But you'll have to spend a fair amount of money with the INI in terms of like things like manhole covers and all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's also chasing the funding from deep.
Okay.
So as we file the applications for different projects to correct the INI, that'll bring that down on paying for groundwater going to Waterbury. So if we lower... We have another wet season. If we pay another 3.26 million because of groundwater, as we correct different issues, we should bring that down. We're not going to correct it 100%. You'll never get it done. But it's a question of if we get it down to a reasonable number or allowable number, it should offset in, you know, future years budgets.
Okay. So are you saying then, do you think that over the course of the next year, you might be able to make a lot of progress?
No. The INI is a... I'm going to say it's probably a five- or 10-year project to handle that, much of a project.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of like how much more ratepayers might be paying on top of if their property taxes go up, and just trying to, you know, get the full picture. I know you can't answer that question, but...
Without guaranteeing it, I would say the rate increase possible for July, it shouldn't be that substantial after that.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Can you just explain for the people who weren't here in the last meeting what the INI means quickly?
The INI is infiltration and inflow into the sewer system that ends up being processed by Waterbury's water pollution control plant. So it's due to illegal sump pump connections, broken laterals, broken mains, manhole covers that have holes that allow the draining of a road to go into the sewer collection system. So we had quite a bit of inflow just last year because of the rainy season that we had.
Did you have the roundabout gallons that you thought that went into the sewer system that should have went into the river system?
Yes.
And why you're trying to decrease that?
So we... I'll round off. It was 349 million, but it was, we'll just say, 350 million gallons of water was purchased. We sent Waterbury 876 million. So the difference of that is 526.55 million gallons of INI groundwater that went to Waterbury for... Because of the INI issue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does any... Anyone else want to ask any department head any question?
Could I talk to the superintendent?
Sure.
So as I said last time, I thought your presentation was excellent, and I think you did a fantastic job of coming in at 3.98%. If the Town Council voted to cut your budget this evening, have you thought about where that would impact your budget and where you might have to make cuts?
I have not identified exactly where we would go for adjustments. But as you guys know, I follow a zero-based budget, and so I don't do any padding. I give you the number that we officially need. As I stated in the presentation, with just contracts alone keeping everything flat, it would have been a 4.28% increase just contracts. But we were able to find some of those efficiencies in health insurance to bring it in under four at 3.98. With that being said, typically, the first place would be personnel because I presented zero-based budget. Otherwise, I would go to other areas. However, I will give this possibility, and I call it a possibility, but it needs to be a partnership possibility, is the way in which we kind of attacked health insurance fairly aggressively, and I brought in a consultant to do that work. It would be to potentially go in and aggressively look at all shared partnerships and see if I can find efficiencies there before I go to touch any of our personnel and move to layoffs. So... But that, of course, has to be done in partnership and in concert. And it's hard work, because, you know, for health insurance, it took us over a year to get to where we were when I presented the budget to you. So that's a possibility, but that's how I'll put it. But typically, because it's zero-based, it would go straight to the personnel piece of it, because I'm pretty much keeping everybody flat as best as possible. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Anybody else you want to talk to?
The police chief?
Okay. Our police chief is here.
Thank you, Chief. I asked the same question to you. If we were to cut the townside of the budget, have you thought about what might have to go from the Police Department?
That depends on the figure. If it's a large percentage, generally, personnel cuts would be the only true answer. If it's a smaller number, we'd probably be looking at reducing our... The asking of how many vehicles that we're looking for this year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the equipment line items are a very small percentage of the overall budget, so, you know, any large reduction would be... Personnel would be the answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One more. In your proposed budget, you were asking for two additional police officers, is that correct?
The original proposed...
And, Mark, you... Those were cut out already?
Those were.
Okay. Thank you.
All set. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Director of Public Works. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll ask the same question to you. If we were to make a budget cut to the townside, do you have any idea where...
I haven't thought which budget. I do think I did come in low with the amount of infrastructure that we have to repair across the town, especially with the focus that we have on drainage, especially for this heavy year that we had. And, you know, there'll be lighter years of rain, but it's going to cycle through. So no, I don't have a specific location in the budget for a cut.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm set.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Harry Nun, again.
I moved it to five.
Town road aid, $353,000,025. Water operations, $2,847,474. Water capital, $680,000. Sewer operations, 2.934,354. Sewer capital, $558,050. Water and sewer debt, $417,590. Crest Brook Golf Operations, $819,322. Local capital improvements, $239,307. Water extensions, $521,0924. Sewer extensions, $100,000. The amounts represent the following: reduction in the town general fund budget of $800,000 and reduction in the school general fund budget of $800,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'm completely opposed to making any cuts at this time. That's why we have the public hearing to hear from the public. I understand that it's a sizable increase in the mill rate, well, decrease in the mill rate, but increase in taxes. And as you heard from the department heads, if we make sizable cuts, which these are both large, that that would mean that they'd have to cut personnel. I personally went on a ride along with the police department earlier this year and that was incredibly informative to see the town that one police officer could cover in a shift. And I know that the police chief had really pushed hard to have more sworn officers so we could cover more of the town and, and I saw firsthand how important that was. And there were a whole bunch of different calls at night from, you know, very serious health issues, traffic violations, potential fires, and we need that coverage. So, I would be, would not want to cut any police officers. I think Mr. Lukowski has done an excellent job with the public works department and has made it very clear that this town is in need of some significant improvements. And we focused on repaving the roads, but, you know, the water is going to keep coming and keep coming. You know, this week it's going to be terrible weather and it's already spring and we need to be prepared for that. And the superintendent of education did an excellent job and her budget is only a 4% increase where the town is a 6.6% increase. So, it makes no sense to me to then increase the dollar amount, or sorry, decrease each budget by the same dollar amount. That just does not make sense to me. I also just don't think that some of us on the town council had enough information to make this decision in a way, you know, having the assessor give the presentation tonight was something that I'd asked for weeks ago. So, I just personally don't feel informed enough. As a teacher, I do my homework and I really want to have as much information as possible. I think the department heads did an excellent job with their presentations, so that's not where I'm finding a lack of information, but we know there were software issues with the budget and so it was just very complicated. So, I just think it's ill-advised to make any cuts at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick my neck out there and just add that this is obviously a very difficult thing for us. And I just want to clarify, we keep saying cuts that we're cutting. We're actually not cutting the budget as it was in the previous fiscal year. We're just trying to, we're trying to slow the, the spending. You know, some homeowners might see a tax increase of 1,000, 1,500. It could be, you know, 2,000, it could be 700. It's everyone, it looks like, is going up. So, we're, we're trying to balance funding this town with not really hurting the community in terms of all the many increases everyone's seeing at the grocery store, you know. So, we're trying to, we're trying to strike that balance and it's not easy. So, I just want to add that in.
Anyone else? I'll add my two cents. We're a service organization. We service children, residents in one manner or another. So, obviously, our costs are high and they increase each year as they do for us as residents in the town. The problem is the town's income has not increased in proportion to our costs. And so, we have to at some point in time decide what services we no longer want or whether we're going to pay whatever it costs. I'm a senior citizen that lives on social security. I'm not ashamed to say that. And an $800 increase in my taxes is too much. And I think there's enough other families in town right now that would feel the same way. What we're doing tonight is only sending the numbers to the public hearing. We haven't pointed at any particular departments. That would be for the town manager and the superintendent to do talking with department heads. And that will only be done after the public hearing, when we hear what residents have to say. If they don't support the cuts, if they want the money restored, that's one avenue. If they want us to cut further, because even with these numbers, there's going to be an increase of a lot of money. So, we'll listen to the public, we'll put numbers out again, and we'll go to a budget hearing. And ultimately, the people in the town will decide whether they want to pay the price for what it costs. And we rely on, on the residents to tell us what they want to do. We want the same terrific police and fire service we have. We don't want to harm that. Public works, we need desperately. And obviously, the school department dictates how people feel about our town and our community and whether they support it. So, we give our time to try and make all those things as good as we can, but we have to be realistic about what we spend. And that's why tonight, we're recommending a reduction. And we'll leave it up to the people to decide. Chair?
I just want to add actually, too small piece of information. With this cut, the mill rate would be estimated around a 28.3839 in that range, and that might seem, based on the slide that we had up there earlier, it's probably one of the lowest mill rates we've had in a very, very long time. With that said, this is probably among the highest tax increases, probably to the exception of last year, that was also quite high. So, I just don't want anyone to be fooled when they see what I think everyone would consider a very low mill rate. That doesn't always interpret the same way when it comes down to the taxes you're going to pay. With the handful of people I've talked to, I don't think anyone's taxes I've talked to were going up less than $700 a year. Some people, it was going up double that. So, I mean, we're all, I would say, in the same boat as far as the costs are going up, taxes are going up, and we all know cost of living, water, sewer, it's all going up unfortunately. And I think this cut is necessary just to try to keep some of those costs under control. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Anyone abstaining? The motion passes.
I move to set the budget, budget hearing to be held April 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM at the Swift Middle School, 250 Colonial Street, Oakville. The public hearing will be an in-person public hearing and available in listen mode only. Those wishing to submit written testimony for the record may do so by April 10th, 2024.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the renewal of the lease with Sunset Grill for, for the restaurant at Crest Brook Golf Course as represented in the memorandum dated March 18th, 2024 from attorney Paul Jessel, which outlines the lease extension, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it possible, is there anybody here from the committee to explain why they chose the $100 increase?
I don't believe so. Can you?
Okay.
Michael Ganim, Director of Parks and Recreation. We wanted to, the, there was a, the leases coming up for renewal this month or soon, and one of the first orders of business that I had when I had the job was to review the lease. The current tenants wanted to actually reduce their monthly cost. The Parks and Recreation Commission did not accept that offer and counter-offered with a escalation of $100 a month for five years.
Okay, I'm just kind of wondering how you came up with that number or is there any...
Well, I mean, I think there was some discussion, we met in executive session about this because it was real estate negotiation, but I think the commission was by and large pleased with the condition of the restaurant, the way the, I inspected it myself to make sure that everything was good. I think they're doing a good job. I think we had to balance the potential of losing a valued tenant and the opportunity cost of potentially losing that tenant in the next few years, and that's not something that the Parks and Recreation Commission felt comfortable with.
Okay, and so they feel like they can still operate a successful business with this new lease agreement and, and obviously the Parks and Recreation Commission feels like this is a fair amount to charge?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great.
Thank you.
To answer your question, I came up with the scale.
Okay.
Okay, what I did was I went back and I looked at what attorney Jessel gave us, the approximate square footage of the restaurant and the going price.
Okay.
And looked at it and it was approximately $5,200 a month. You're going to lose the tenant and you're going out the door, you have nothing up there. And so, I made a scale for $100 a month, more, 200, 300, 400, 500. The $100 a month is only for the first year of that escalating scale. The second year is going to be $200 a month, the third year, $300 a month, the fourth year, 400, and so on. The restaurant had proposed to us to stay at the $4,000 rate they're at now with a reduction of $1,000 a month for the months of January, February, and March, where they claimed they don't do as much business. And the commission felt that we're not in the business to subsidize a restaurant. They're a tenant, they should be paying a fair share. So, we did not allow the $3,000 deduction overall. We did say you can reduce it at that time and like COVID, pay it back in June, July, August. You are not getting a rebate of $3,000 a year on the restaurant for those months. And as we're in an escalating scale, so by, it'll be $4,500 a month by the time you're fired.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, very helpful.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move, I move to approve the appropriation in the amount of $6,000 from the water fund balance and $6,000 from the sewer fund balance for a total of $12,000, for which $6,000 is for the sewer generator service contract line item and $6,000 is for the water generator service contract line item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, if someone can turn off their mic. Was this not in the water and sewers budget in prior years or why do we need to appropriate this from their funds?
I'm asking for the increase because we had to do a load bank testing for two hours, so that's the increase on the cost of that extended part of the service contract that we already have with them.
So, additional cost for additional procedures on testing?
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the appropriation in the amount of $25,000 from the water fund balance to the pumping equipment maintenance line item to cover the service repairs to the Fern Hill Water Pump Station.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anybody have a question? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, April 15th, 2024 at 6:45 PM at the Watertown Hall, Town Council Chambers, to consider an appropriation in the amount of $60,000 for the water fund balance to, to the maintenance of mains, lines, and to the Bunker Hill Road water main break repairs, pressure-reducing valve inspections, and leak detection.
There was a multiple?
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Excuse me, we don't have a conflict with the budget, is that right?
No, I don't believe we will on the 15th.
15th, we have our meeting here at 7:00. That's not the public hearing.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a wage increase for the deputy fire chief for fiscal year 2024, 2025 to be 3%. The increase will be in addition to the $3,016 previously voted on in the town council meeting on March 18th, 2024, for which we'll align the salary with the deputy fire marshal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions are coming.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Could I get an explanation as to what is meant by we'll align the salary with the deputy fire marshal?
Will be the same as.
They, so the exact same as, the salary...
They were, my understanding is they were the same. When we didn't give the 3% raise, it, it changed that. Is that correct, Chief? We neglected to put that position on when we did the 3% raise.
Just to clarify the, in my budget, I had put in for the $3,016 to align the pay scales with the deputy fire marshal. When the deputy fire marshal was hired, he was hired at a higher rate. They were supposed to be hired together, so I aligned him together. So, with the 3% that he didn't get, it misaligns it again. So, with the 3% raise in addition to it, now they're equal pay as it was set up when they first were hired.
Okay, so the deputy fire chief and the deputy fire marshal will make the exact same salary?
Correct. Well, not the same salary, same hourly rate.
Same hourly rate?
Correct.
Okay.
The deputy fire chief gets 20 hours a week right now and the deputy fire marshal gets 15 hours a week.
15 for the fire marshal and 20 for the...
20 for the deputy fire chief and 15 for the deputy fire marshal.
Okay.
But they will be the same hourly rate.
Okay, thank you, that explains it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
One abstention, the motion passes.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $816.74 for tax refunds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are at public participation. And we are at public participation.
May I approach the handout?
Thank you. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Thank you, good evening. For the record, Elio Longo, I reside at 83 Bella Vista Drive. I'm here this evening. Thank you.
Lauren, can you get that one?
I don't think that'll work. I think you just have to use the other side.
My voice has to broadcast anyway, so. Can I just repeat? For the record, Elio Longo, I reside at 83 Bella Vista Drive. My comments this evening will center on two themes. One is the FOIA requests that I filed over the course of almost three months now with the town of Watertown, and the other are my comments in general on the upcoming fiscal year '25 budget. With the former, it's been approximately three months now that I've filed a number of FOIA requests, and I find it interesting, this evening, in the town manager's report, you're told that there's training that's required. And that seems now to be a common theme in the recent months. There was training for how to upload documents to the new FOIA system from Public Works. There's training on the $30 million software issue, or accounting issue. Now there's training for FOIA. I suggest and advise to you that the town has counsel, and Mr. Jessel is well skilled and adept at providing immediate responses or answers as to what type of information must be made available to the public in a FOIA request. At the March 18th meeting, you were told that the town had no knowledge of a formal complaint filed with the state. I beg to differ, it's because there's a deadline, which is a week from this evening, that the town must respond, and I, as the complainant, must respond to the FOIA commission. So if you haven't received this, if you want to check with department heads, town manager, or perhaps with attorney Jessel, but there is a formal complaint and a hearing. That being said, I did share through the chair a series of FOIA requests, and as well as communication, and I would just like confirmation that that information was received and is shared amongst the common counsel.
It was received, right.
Okay. So to date, I have not received any direct feedback on any of my questions or concerns regarding the FOIA. What triggered my FOIA request is an issue that I've been having for several years now, and it's come to light again in January with drainage and culvert pipe that's located in the right-of-way on my property, 83 Bella Vista Drive. I tried not to make this a public arena in terms of having to disclose certain information, but here I am again today. It seems that the record will indicate and show that there was preference given to an individual who was a town employee of Public Works at a time, not that his property wasn't, or complaint wasn't deserving of a response, but it was immediate attention. So what I request, FOIA request for, oh, show me the records in either the former or their current work order system. And the town remains silent. And then the town takes position of, well, we need training, we just don't know what to release. That will not hold water, I believe, before the state, in front of the state commission. When I have responses that are uploaded through the system, and thank you to Mr. Radelik, who at the DPW Subcommittee said that he would look into a matter for me and get back to me right away, two days later, lo and behold, there's an upload of a file on the online portal. What no one was really paying close attention to was the scan of that document was timestamped, and that information, I was led to believe, was withheld from me for approximately two weeks. So it's not a training as to how do we upload documents, it could be as simple as calling, calling me and saying, Mr. Longo, Elio, the information is readily available. There's no state requirement that you have to work through a portal, you have to upload. Now, at the March 18th meeting, when Public Works presented the department's budget, you were told, and you approved, and you advanced, again, a SIP plan, and factored into that SIP plan was $500,000 for driveway aprons. I questioned at a time even my communication to the council. What do you know? What do we know about these driveway aprons? What I know is, through the town council, is that the town does not own driveway aprons. So why is there a request for $500,000? What's the calculation behind it? These are all questions, I'm repeating myself, right, from two weeks ago. At the same evening, you were told that for every single project in the SIP plan, there's a fire folder back at the office, because too much detail is less transparent. But when you just summarize and have no detail, how's that being transparent? So the very next morning, I sent an email, I try not to file FOIA request, but I sent an email to the department requesting permission to review the file folder specific to the driveway aprons. Okay? Not by words, you were told. There's a file folder for each of these projects. Two weeks after the fact, there's still no response. As a matter of fact, 48 hours thereafter, I'm alerted by email that my request had been submitted and entered into the FOIA system on behalf of Mr. Longo. Then we hear through the town manager's report last week, well, you know, the town has expended 50 hours on Mr. Longo's complaints or concerns. We're searching through boxes, we're searching between buildings here. One of my requests, which is still outstanding, was for a copy of a work order report, which was presented to the DPW Subcommittee in early January. Here we are, two months later, I still can't get a copy of that report. It was in a person's hand, individual's hand, at a meeting. I still can't get that report, and we're told that people are searching high and low in 50 hours? I think that's a little hyperbolic, as a matter of fact, because I heard that 50 hours three weeks ago, and I heard it a week ago as well, too. So either there's a standstill now, or that 50 hours is just being put out there to say, I'm taking up or I'm consuming too much of the town's resources here. There's no mention about how many hours are being taken up trying to figure our way out of this $30 million debacle, though, right? But when it comes to the public's interest and the FOIA request, I'm told there's over 50 hours expended in this project. Now, we have to go to training, we have to have someone from Hartford come down to assist us. Well, why don't you just consult with the town attorney and save everybody some time here on it? FOIA isn't new. It's not new to this town. So, you know, I'm a bit frustrated, as you can tell here, that when I share communication, whether it's with the town manager's office, now with the full council, there's zero feedback. The silence is deafening, because there's zero feedback. You might very well be working behind the scenes on here, you know, Mark said at the last meeting is that, he's working on an overarching letter, just trying to consolidate all of my requests into one and get a response. Now tonight, it's, we don't even know what we're looking for, so we need formal training. So either you're working on a response, or you're awaiting formal training. This information that I'm seeking, I have yet to hear even from the town attorney, that is not quote-unquote FOI-able, that this is protected information. This is information that should be readily available, made available. That being said, I want to just highlight a couple of areas on the town.
Excuse me, you only have one minute left of your five.
Okay, I'll be quick. Okay. So handout this evening, right? At the March 18th meeting, you advanced a budget that included recommendation for Public Works, which again is of special interest to me, $500,000. I pointed out to this council, double-checked the math, it's off by hundreds of thousands of dollars. You were told that it's a 15% increase year-over-year. If you take a look at the handout, it actually increased, as was presented to you, was a 25% increase. Now, the town manager's report to the far right at the very top comes in at 15%. It seems that within the past two weeks, there were reductions to the 25 to get it back in line, which was the 15%, which you were told. At the bottom matrix over here, in my final 30 seconds here, you'll see the highway division. The highway division is, again, of particular interest because it addresses drainage. $432,000 reduction to the department's request. That's 97% of the reduction came from 2/3 of the division's budget. So highway accounts for 64%, 2/3 of the entire department's budget, yet the town manager reduced the highway by 97%. So these are the hard questions that this council should be asking of his department head and of his town leaders here. Was the budget in fact off by over, over $200,000, $300,000? How is it that 15, you were told it was 15%, the calculation is 25, but now all of a sudden it comes in at 15% this evening? And to credit Ms. Ryan, has said earlier, she's a teacher, she does her homework, she expects the same of her students. All I'm asking is, here's the information, before you advance these numbers, that there will be a public hearing, right, on all this. This is not, you know, a finished matter, per se, on it. The public will continue to comment and have input. But before you advance it, these are some of the questions that you ought to be asking with all due respect. What makes it difficult is the public comment is reserved for late in the evening. I'm more accustomed to every agenda item, you should seek some public comment, because you may have some taxpayers who can provide the information that could help you reach your decisions, rather than voting to advance the budget, and then, should you have to decide as to whether or not to rescind a prior vote on it? So those are my concerns. Again, in terms of just wrapping up with the FOIA, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I hope the town does respond by the deadline, which is set for April 8th of this year, of this month, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hi, excuse me, Frankie Popolowski, 35 Chestnut Avenue. Excuse me. I'm kind of a little surprised tonight that we've gotten hit by so many angles here. There's a water and sewer, they need money for something that we've never even heard of before, and I understand that things need to be done, but our taxes are going to go up, and you know that. We're going to have to pay more money for water and sewer, you know that, too. What's going to happen when the bottom falls out of our property? Because it is going to happen. It won't stay this way forever. I'd be surprised if we went through another year, year and a half like this. It's all going to fall out. Then what happens to all the money that we're pouring in? Excuse me. I know he won't answer me. The one budget I don't think should be cut back is the police officers. We need our police. I took that Citizens Police Academy course, it was wonderful. I did it four years ago when I first moved here, and I learned so much more this time around, and how much has changed in four years. We need more police officers. They have to be, you have to take care of the police force. I personally don't think teachers should be making more than a police officer. I don't have any kids, but I still got to pay for the board of ed, I'm paying for buses that there's 10 kids on, it's ridiculous. I don't understand why there's so much waste. So, the water and sewer, that, well, I've already discussed that. I don't know where you expect people to get all of this money. Mary Ann, I'm just like you, I'm on a fixed income through social security. It's going to hurt you, it's going to hurt me, it's going to hurt everybody. People can't afford to stay here anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to us?
Good evening, Rich Rosansky, 35 Reynolds Street. Just hope we can clarify some numbers here. Ms. Ryan said that the municipal increase was 6.6%. Was that before the 800K reduction, or prior to the 800K reduction?
I don't know what she was quoting.
It would have been before.
That's before the reduction. And then, just some clarification of the estimated real mill rate, and I know it's estimated, I'm not asking them to commit themselves, but Ms. Richmond said 28.99, Mr. Ramsey said 28.389. Can we clarify what we think the estimated number is?
That number was after a $1.6 million cut.
Okay, so, so, I'm sorry, Faith's number or your number?
My number was after.
After the cut.
After the cut from May. Very good, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak with us?
Al Mickel, 95 Woodvine Avenue. I voted yes on the budget for the last 30 years. I've always thought that the budget should go to the people for them to decide where they want to cut, or how to cut. You are the finance Subcommittee, did you give the town manager any indication where he should cut? That's a yes or no answer?
No.
No, you didn't give him any, okay, as the finance committee, you didn't. Now, you had a caucus in the back room, is that where you decided on the $800,000?
We discussed whether we wanted to cut.
And you came up with $800,000?
We did, when I came out here, yeah.
Now, the only place I could find the current budget was online. It wasn't available for the meeting tonight. And the one that was online was dated March 1st. So has any of those numbers changed since March 1st, besides this potential $800,000 cut?
Honestly, Al, I don't know what was online, so I can't answer that intelligently.
Well, it was dated March 1st. Does anybody know if it's been changed since March 1st?
I don't, I wouldn't believe so.
I'm wondering if I can get an electronic copy like I asked for, that would be handy. The school budget is zero-based budget. I went to the school board budget meeting, and there was an excellent presentation, and the point being, if they, they didn't make certain cuts, just raising the salaries would increase. So I think the town should go back, and the finance committee should go back and look at the current cuts and see what can be cut and what cannot be cut. There is fluff in our budget. I can name several areas where there is fluff in the budget, and I'll be more than happy to, at any time you want. We should go to a zero-based budget, or you people should direct the town manager where the cuts should occur. Obviously, they shouldn't occur in the police department or the fire department, that's the role of government. I must be leaning against the budget. Health and safety is the main requirement of government, is protect the health and safety of its citizens. So I suggested no cuts be made in those areas. And, you know, I'm a senior living on a fixed income, too. I understand that the water and sewer budget might increase. I've taken precautions or actions to reduce my use of water, and I wash the dishes differently, but I'm not going to tell you how I reduce the other part of the budget. But please take a closer look at that $800,000. We have, the world has crippled this town for years, and cutting the budget is not the way to go. We have to increase the spending to make this a good place to live, for people want to move in and spend their money here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
移到
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
On.
Recording stopped.